August 31st. Work session for the Board of Douglas County Commissioners, I'll turn it over to Sarah Plinsky in just a moment to introduce our guests in our work session, but a reminder for anybody who's with us online that no action is taken during these work sessions for presentation and discussion purposes amongst the commission. Sarah?
Thank you Commissioners. I'm just going to introduce Jay Zemrashid, our Director of Capital Projects, and Jay, maybe you can have the team introduce themselves and and we can jump into the presentation.
Yes, please, this is Jay Zemrashid, Director of Capital Projects, will introduce the design team working on the below grade waterproofing project and we'll start with you Stan.
There we go, it's got to be green. So I'm Stan Hermling, Architect, our office is just block away from here. Megan Bruin is at our office and she's helped with some of the architectural side of the work. Josh Davis is our Masonry Structural Consultant and Steve Hughes is our Mechanical Engineer.
Commissioners, this, this project really originated clear back, I believe it was in 2006 when a preservation plan for this building was started. And this is kind of one of those pieces that's coming to the forefront that we're seeing is critical to get resolved and a solution for it prior to implementation of future master plan components that involve this building. And so that's why it, it specifically has been prioritized. We are in the process now of Phase One of the study of this building. It was presented, I'd have to go back and look at the exact date, but it was put before this board. We went out for RFP, currently an associate was selected to do the work. This basically represents the some total of their work on the building and study of the building as part of that Phase One. And that's what they will be presenting here to you today. Unless there are a lot of other questions, I think I'd turn it over to them to do the presentation. Okay, so I'm going to be showing PowerPoint and I'm going to hop up to the lectern and I don't know if the PowerPoint has started or not. Okay. What, will I need to? Yeah. Oh wait a minute, I need to start with PowerPoint first. Okay. So. Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay, so we've already, we've already introduced our team. Okay, here we go. All right, here we go. Okay, so just a little bit of information on the configuration of courthouse basement. So the courthouse basement has two levels. The main, the majority of it is at an elevation that's about five foot nine inches below grade. The boiler room mechanical space that's in the southeast corner is about eight foot three inches below grade. So in plan on the left is the floor plan of the basement. The large area that's hatched in kind of a peach color is five foot nine inches below grade and then basement in the southeast at about eight foot three. So one of our first tasks was to walk through the building and sort of observe some of the moisture damage. This is on the north end of the building, on the slide, the portion of the slide on the right, the green arrow is pointing to where those photos are taken. So that's a window on the north end of the building. There's a wall on the north end of the building, so that's basically the wall that's right behind the stair that comes up outside on the north side. This is in the north vault on the west side. This is in the north, the outside wall of the north vault. This is the south vault on the west side. This is in the stairwell that exits out that door just to the south of the main entrance on the west side. You see there's some moisture damage coming up on the left hand side. So these locations where we've seen moisture damage, we'll talk a little bit more about that when we look at some of the exterior features. So this is down in the south end of the building where there's a little turn in the, in the wall, so that's an interior wall that has some moisture damage down low. Again, that's the other side of that same wall. So after looking through the interior, we went to the outside. So this portion is looking at the downspouts coming from the roof. There are 10 downspouts and we have the number just for convenience of identifying them. Numbered one through 10 clockwise starting northeast corner. We'll go through these individually, so this number one drains the main roof that comes down to a leader that dumps onto the, the mulch underneath the landscaping right beside that north stair. Numbers two, three and five go up to the upper roof, number four is for the little glass enclosure over the stairway. Now the downspouts from those terminate it at some pop-up leaders out in the yard in between the building and the sidewalk. And one of those pop-up leaders didn't look like it was operating correctly. There are also some pinhole pinholes in the downspouts. And we've got a video that will show that here in just a second. Downspout six is at the southeast corner and it's sort of close to that HVAC unit. It comes down and empties onto a splash block and then it drains on the, the concrete slab and then landscape mulch kind of traps water before it can drain away very quickly. Number seven is at the southwest corner. And this is the one that has a video, so let me see if I can make that thing right. Okay, so this was when it was raining, so there, those are the pinholes where you can see water coming out of the downspout at various little spots. This one has an underground leader that goes out, it cuts through the sidewalk and then it empties onto the pavement. Number eight is on the west side. This one comes from the upper roof and it empties onto the landscape mulch right beside that, right beside the main stair. You can see mulch kind of washed out over the sidewalk. And then also at this location, it doesn't have a downspout, but this little roof that's over the main entrance. There's a little stone water spout right here that drains water off of this little roof that's over the entrance. And this video here will show what's happening with that. This leader wasn't operating at the time we took that, that leader's been replaced since, and so I think that that's working okay. But the water that you see on the ground there is mostly coming from this little water spout from that roof, it comes down, it hits the building, splashes around and then builds up on the ground right adjacent to the, to the building. Downspout nine is on the west side also, it comes out and empties into the landscape mulch. And number 10 comes down and it does not have a leader, it just empties right adjacent to the building. So that's on the north end where do we have quite a bit of water damage on the interior. There are a few little grading issues around the building, so one of the things about the landscape mulch that's right up against the building is that there's sort of, there's an edge created between the lawn, the yard, the turf and the mulch, and that tends to keep water, surface water from draining away very quickly. And on the south end of the building, there's a little low spot in the yard, it's really hard to photograph low spots, but if you walk out there, you'll see there's a low spot that water kind of stands there and has to soak in instead of draining away. So our, our recommendation for downspout improvements is to put in an underground leader system that would pick up all 10 downspouts and to the south of the building coming right through at this entrance drive off of Massachusetts and then under that little landscape island where the parking, between the parking and the drive, there's a storm drain that comes down, there's an inlet that's down at the east end of that. So what we would propose is to connect leaders from the downspouts and get them out and connected to this storm drain so that all of the roof water is getting taken away and it's not going onto the ground adjacent to the building. So the second part of the waterproofing recommendation is for below grade waterproofing of the stone. And so on the left, the little diagram, wherever you see a green line is where we're proposing that we would put waterproofing, waterproofing system on the building and a foundation drain. We are not proposing to excavate, remove the HVAC equipment, take this pad out. We're not proposing to waterproof that wall that's right around the mechanical room. So that system will be deeper than the downspout leader system. So that system would drain and come into a sump pit that's exterior to the building. And it would have a sump pump in it and that pump would then pump the water up. And then that would tie into the leader that comes down and ties into the storm drain. There's an existing sump pit and pump at the bottom of the ramp on the east side. There's a drain at the bottom of the stairwell that goes down to the mechanical room. We don't know where that goes. This, the sump pump at the north portion comes out and it looks like it comes to the north and daylights into the street curb out at 11th Street. We would propose to reroute that and connect it into the new system that's coming down to the storm drains at this end. And we would propose to put in a new sump pit at the bottom of the stairwell and connect that out to the, the pipe that comes down to the storm drain. So this is just diagram to show how the downspout leader, underground leader would be up higher. The foundation drain would be down lower. So this one would go to the sump pit and that one would go to the storm sewer. So when we were looking at the foundation waterproofing system, one of the things we had to define was what does the stone look like below grade? If you look at the building, everything that's above grade, there's a pitch and a convex base on the stones. And that has about a three inch average depth. There's a, a spot right here by this entrance on the east side where when this was rebuilt and the entrance was added to the stair, some of the stone was exposed down lower and it has the same pitch depth as the stone that's above grade. We also talked with Tracy Green, BA Green Construction. They did all of the work back in the day in seventies when this ramp and that entrance was added. Tracy seemed to think that he dug a shovel along the building there and it was a rough face like that. So it's handy to have people that have been around for a while. So what we're recommending is to create a smoother surface for the waterproofing system that would be applied is to put a parge coat of mortar onto the stone that's below grade. We've done this on several projects around town, 1307 Massachusetts is the, the John, John. The house at the Castle Tea Room, yeah. I forgot his last name, sorry, anyway. And then 1040 Massachusetts is the English Lutheran Church. So the parge coat wouldn't create a perfectly smooth level surface, but it would even out the faces of the stone. And then we would we're recommending to use a fluid applied waterproofing and that's on the, what was used at 1307 Mass. 1040 New Hampshire, the old English Lutheran used a membrane. The, the two products perform similarly. The fluid applied coating is less expensive. And if we can, we're thinking that we can get a really good product and can give that system to work really well. This is just a diagram to show how the parging evens it out. And how the whole system would work together. There's a drainage mat that goes against the wall after the waterproofing is installed. That helps to drain any water in the ground to go straight down and get into the, the foundation drain. There's some other work that's recommended as part of the project, so this is the stair that's on the north end of the building. A lot of the stairs are spalled. There's a lot of, on the interior, there's a lot of damage to the moisture damage to the interior finishes at that portion of the building. It's hard to know if it's water coming through the stairs or if it's groundwater from downspouts that are nearby. But in any case, we're proposing that those step, those stairs would be rebuilt. Also at the east side, the little stairwell that goes down to the mechanical room, that stone retaining wall has a pretty good ball genit. We're proposing that work, that would be rebuilt. The steps would be rebuilt, there'd be a new concrete slab down here. And that's where there'd be a new sump pit that would connect into the system to get to the storm drain. The guardrails that are installed here and the guardrails that are installed at the stair going up and also at the retaining wall around. Those are, you know, from 1977 and the space between the pickets is greater than what's current, or currently required by code, which is a four inch, maximum four inch spacing between them. So we're proposing that those would be replaced as part of this work also. And then there's a spreadsheet that kind of breaks down line item costs for particular pieces of the project. I like to do a fairly detailed line item. When the project is done and you compare the total cost to what we projected as a total cost, that's what we want to be close to each other. When I've done, when I've looked at the line items, individual line items could be way off, but the, the goal is to try to get, you know, some high, some low. And so the, the price on the spreadsheet is about 1.2 million. And schedule wise, we're looking at about 16 months total, we'll have some design development phase and then construction document phase as part of the design development and construction documents. We're going to need to have some survey work done to verify depths of the storm sewer and figure out exactly how those piping systems will work and the pipes will stay below ground and not, and work the way they're supposed to. So that is the entirety of the presentation and be happy to take questions and I'll just come back and sit down.
Thank you for that presentation. I hear Commissioner Portillo has some questions, I'm going to turn it over to her first.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. I really appreciate that we're getting this work done and it does look like it's quite a bit of work. I'm just wondering, because it does seem like we're going to have to dig up around the entirety of the building. How disruptive will this be for the folks who are working in the building day to day and the folks who are meeting once a week in this building as well?
So the, in the design development and construction document phase, we would be talking with county staff and figuring out sequencing of various parts of the project that the, the two entrances, the main entrance on the west and the main entrance on the east. The goal would be to not affect those two entrances. There, it's going to be a little tricky on the east side and there could be a little tricky spot on the west side, how we get get the pipes to go underneath those sidewalks. We may be able to excavate on both sides, leave the sidewalks, have pedestrian barricades so people could still use the sidewalks and then they would, would drill underneath the sidewalk to run the pipe through the drilled opening. That would be the plan. And that's also one of the reasons for not recommending that the southeast corner be included so that the HVAC system, HVAC system doesn't have to be disconnected to do that part of the project. In terms of noise and disruption from that, it, we'll have to talk through that. I mean, there are going to be days when there's excavation equipment right up close to the building and we would need to coordinate and make sure that we allow enough time in the contract with the contractor that if, if the county decides, well, we can't have them working on this day, then they'll have to just not work that day. So we can handle that several ways. One would be to give an extended time period for the project. Another would be to give a time period that we think is adequate. And then each day that the county says you can't work that day would get added as another day onto the end of the project. We've been doing that basically at the Methodist Church with the stone masonry work that's been going on there.
Similarly, I, I was wondering what you expect the impact on the accessible entrance and the ramp to be in particular and how how long we might expect for that to sort of be out of commission and what mitigation there might be to still provide accessible?
Yeah, thanks for asking that. The, the ramp itself doesn't need any physical work on it. The landing at the stairway, which is adjacent to that, it's not connected to it. That need, it's, it's tilted away from the building. And it, what we've proposed is to repour the, the top slab of that, but that works to be able to be done without affecting the ramp. The guardrails should be able to be done without affecting the use of the ramp. The rerouting, I believe that the sump pit pipe from the sump pit that's at the bottom of that ramp, I believe it comes out like it's either right down low through the wall or it might even be right straight out of the pit and up and out. So I think that it'll be accessible outside of the ramp also. So I don't think that there will be any time that the ramp, there will be, so as I'm thinking about it, one of the places we have to figure out is that downspout number one in the northeast corner, it has to either go around to the west and connect in with all of those or it has to come around to the east. If it comes around to the east, it would need to go under that little beginning point of the ramp. And so that route, the route of that will sort of be the the key to that will be how deep the storm sewer is in the parking lot to the south. Because we'll start at that elevation and work our way up. And if we can stay below ground and get all the way to that northeast corner, then that's the way we would go to get to pick that one up. But, yep.
Two quick questions first about the stairs on the north side of the building and this may be for Jay. Currently, those aren't used by anyone. Is the plan as we look towards reusing this building that those would become usable stairs?
I might take it a little bit instead of Jay. So we need, they're part of the historical integrity of the building. So if, if we are going to restore the building, we need to restore the stairs whether they're used or not. I, I would just say from a liability perspective, I would like them restored even if it's just for seniors taking their senior photos on them, which they do every spring and I'm worried they're going to fall through them. You know, just from that kind of liability perspective, but our plan would not be to make that a usable entrance to the building on the north side. I believe. But I did, I have a follow-up kind of question to that, I know you've got another question, but.
So can I add on to that? So there's a really nice ice cream shop pretty close and when people get ice cream, I see them sitting at various locations over at the Watkins, the wall. And if those stairs were open to be able to be sat on, that might actually be a nice spot.
Well, I mean.
It's true, they absolutely sit on them already, I notice it all the time. It's easy to just hop over those bushes and.
Very thorny bushes in front of them.
It's not much of a deterrent, but.
I think that the north stair has always been part of the conversation about if we have, you have, we would have to take it down and do our best to preserve what is there, store it while, while the work is happening. And then, you know, we've talked to you all about the rest of the building. You know, would your recommendation be to put the stairs back up before the rest of the building is done or could it wait until we, you know, depending on the timing of the rest of the work?
So ideally, we would be able to get access to the foundation wall that's underneath the stair as part of the foundation waterproofing. So we would be able to take the stairs out, excavate, do everything under there that we're doing everywhere else and get a foundation drain through there somehow. There are some perpendicular stone walls that come out underneath those stairs to hold them up. So we will be working around those, but ideally we would get, we would do that as part of the foundation waterproofing part.
And wouldn't have to go back.
Right.
I would say too that one of the things that's been, has been discussed, that discussed off and on over time about those north stairs is that perhaps we could apply to the state for some Heritage Trust Fund dollars since it is really part of just the historical preservation of the building. It's not, you know, it'll make great spot for ice cream, but not necessarily for a lot of county youth. So I do think that's something that is, you know, I'd want to work with Caitlin Stanley and her team and talk about if that's something that we could pursue to help offset those costs.
I, I do think it's important to note that when the ADA sidewalk was put in, when the ramp down to the basement, that accessible path was integrated, they did waterproof that side of the building. And I'm not exactly sure what that means for us as we move forward, but I take heart knowing that if you go down there and look at those walls, they are surviving so much better than those that were built in 1904 with nothing out there. The walls look, I mean, they look really good. They, they look protected, which is really where I think we're going for this, for the rest of the building. So I think that's worth noting. Yeah, the north stairs are, are awesome, but I don't know that we'll ever put them back into use as a public access for for security reasons, there's, we're using those spaces for staff currently. And so I'm not sure there would ever be an intent to put those back into full service.
This isn't the first time we've talked about the historic courthouse and so for those who may be watching for the first time, Stan, if you could walk us through sort of what our responsibilities are since it is historic, Sarah sort of referenced that. And then that may be another part, because I know the whole design team is here, is maybe what happens if we don't do anything? And just what, you know, this plan just says we're going to, this is your recommendation. And just what, you know, this plan just says we're gonna, this is your recommendation. But, but what happens if we don't do this work to this building?
So, um, the, the work that's proposed, um, as we're putting together the construction documents, uh, those would need to be reviewed. Uh, I think by, uh, historic resources, I'm not certain of that. Uh, and then they would need to be reviewed at the state historical society office, the shipos office, uh, for conformance with the, the, um, National Park Service rehabilitation guidelines. And we've been through that process a lot and the, the things that we're proposing have been approved through that process before. If you decided not to proceed with the project, I think the, the minimum amount that you would want to do is to get water away from the building. That seems to be the, the, uh, the, that is the main issue. Um, and I mean, you could, you could put longer leaders on all of those downspouts and get them farther away from the building and that would help. But, you know, there's not an easy way to do that without, you know, tearing up sidewalks. And so it's not a simple, simple thing. The, the moisture that's coming into the building, uh, is causing plaster on the inside to spall off. Uh, it would continue to do that. And it, 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 it would be allowing, uh, moisture into the basement. Um, it, it would make that, it would make those spaces hard to use as finished, occupiable, uh, workspace for people, you know, long-term kind of arrangement. So it really, doing the project, um, really adds another higher quality space for you to use in the building.
Commissioner Kelly, yeah, and Jay, that's all tied into other work that we're doing in the building as well. Is that correct?
Ideally, ideally, that component, uh, the, as I'm sure you're aware, walking around the courthouse is utilized fully. And so having that square footage available for, you know, operations is, um, is paramount. And, uh, keeping as many individuals in the courthouse as we can, so that we're not looking to move departments out or whatever. So maximizing our square foot availability here makes absolute sense. If we were building this building today, we would be doing this process on the front end of it instead of uncovering and doing it now. And so, um, I think, um, yet the reality is we need that square footage. Um, and it's planned for as part of future phases. It was identified in the space needs, also planned for in the master, uh, master plan. And we're fully utilizing that basement for, um, for operations. And so.
So one, one thing I forgot to mention on the cost end of things is that, um, the by the county, you can earn, uh, preserve it historic rehabilitation tax credits from the state. So there's a percent of twenty-five can earn back as tax credits and then sell those for basically ninety cents on the dollar and, and. So the project physically doesn't cost as much, uh, as it would without those. So that would be one other review. That's a, an application and a process that, uh, they would be looking at.
I think I can add as someone who's worked in the building for going on twelve years now. You know, it's, there are times when it is, it's wet down there. Uh, it's a limestone basement. Um, we've done a number of things to try to mitigate that. But clearly, when you have staff working in a space that's wet, it's not great. Tried dehumidifiers, we've tried, you know, different types of coating, replacing flooring and things like that to try to make it better, but it is, you know, until you can really stop the, or help prevent water from coming into the space, we're just not going to really be able to make any progress. Also tied into the, to the master plan work and to all the additional things we have planned, it really was advised that this piece be done first. You know, if we're gonna dig up underground, let's get this piece done. Um, it makes a lovely segue into the actual, and I'm gonna get all the words wrong, Stan. You know the words better than I do, but like the stone, what I would just call stone restoration work of the remainder of this building. That project was started in the mid-two thousands, early two thousands here, so.
Yeah, I think, I think Don did the.
I know when I got here in, in ten, it was, it was done. And they, they really just did the west face of the building. The, the other sides were not completed. Since that time, and as Stan's noted, there's, you know, we've had some settling on the north end. Cracks are a lot more substantial on the north end. Um, so, you know, doing this underground piece first and then being able to go around and finish the rest of the building will really help preserve this just important asset for our community and make it a working building. Instead of just, you know, turning it into a space that's not used quite heavily. So, um, I, we think this is an important step to get underway in order to do those other things. The, the interior kind of reshuffling can, can happen while we're doing some of those pieces. It's gonna be noisy around here for a while, but, um, I think we can balance that out with good schedule planning. You know, just trying to keep staff aware of when work is planned to happen and just trying to keep the public aware.
One of, one of the things that we'll want to, uh, really consider in the design phase is, uh, what do we do with the landscaping that goes back? Is we don't want to recreate a situation where we're holding water close to the building. Um, and whether we do something other than mulch right up against the building or if we, uh, we'll, we'll have to really think about that.
This Commissioner Reed, I appreciate that. I was just gonna ask about, since you mentioned the mulch retaining moisture so much and there's a significant amount of it against the building that beyond the solution of drainage and really carrying water away, what's some other recommendations for this sort of long-term maintenance? Whether it's landscaping or other, um, typical building maintenance that would help make it so that, um, we really are creating that solid foundation and slowing or stopping future damage.
The, the work that we've done so far hasn't, hasn't proposed anything yet. Um, I think we would want to, uh, really go through that with, um, the county's building grounds division and, and sort of talk through that. There, there are some, on this west side, there's a tree that's pretty close to the building that, that'll be in the way and will end up going away. And I, we, we wouldn't propose to put back new trees close to the building. I don't know if we would propose, uh, turf right up to the building. We'll, we'll just have to think about that more. I mean, it's really, it's really attractive having the, the shrubs and the mulch kind of highlighting the building. So I'd, I'd like to have something like that, but maybe it's in smaller areas. I don't know. It will come up with.
Maybe some native prairie plants that are really good at retaining water.
There's logically some crossover there too, to, as we're doing the below grade waterproofing project, if we're rolling very quickly into an above-grade masonry project, one is digging down in the ground and the other is setting up scaffolding and going up the side of the building. So doing a whole lot of planting immediately following a waterproofing effort, we're pretty much going to be sacrificing that when it's time to start scaffolding up. And so, um, considering the next phases of those above-grade masonry restoration pieces, I, I think is important because it may suggest what we do and don't want to do as part of the waterproofing project. I think Stan would tell you that an old building is a sponge. Um, very much so below grade, which is what we're talking about solving here. But they did quite a bit of research and poring over the building and looking. You can tell it's all about getting water away right off the roof and away. But there's also, you know, cracks in the mortar on the stone and it lets water in. And it, that's not going to be the lion's share of what you're seeing in the basement. But it's still, you know, those pieces really matter going and finishing the building, resealing around windows, all of those pieces let water into a wall that's a foot and a half or more thick and it kind of find its way down. And so.
I think that's important with the downspout piece too, that as we're thinking about, you know, the rest of the work. I, I, so what I'm saying is I want to preview the commission here that I can envision that as, as the, definitely as the construction work for the waterproofing is underway, that staff will bring back to you that project for their extra, the rest, the rest of the restoration of the, of the above-grade work, so that we can sequence things appropriately. So you're not installing a downspout and then six months later taking it apart, you know? So can we, can we start that project? And I, I think Stan's team with their knowledge of, of historic structures will be helpful for us figuring out, like, when is that? What does that sequencing look like? Should we, when is a good time to do some of those things? Uh, Jay has convinced me multiple times that it is a different setup, you know, teams that do the underground work than the above-ground work. Uh, and I believe you all that that's the case. But as much as we can kind of reduce duplicate work, I think would just be more efficient for a building that is heavily trafficked.
That, that's a good point because, I mean, the downspouts do need to be replaced, but they're not leaking so much right now that they would have to be done as part of the sub-grade work. They could be done as part of the masonry work as it progresses around the building.
This Commissioner Reed, I, I just have one more question. It's just out of curiosity, since I thought it's interesting that the drainage is tying into the sewage and then it would be underground where, or not sewage, sorry. I meant stormwater, sorry. Wrong S-word. My apologies. Not the same. I do know that there are different systems. So anyway, I found that curious, knowing that, you know, the otherwise they're emptying, currently emptying out as in some of the examples you gave onto those impervious surfaces. So I just wondered, one, like, is that kind of generally the benefit of it? Is that it's all going to a directed, managed, um, uh, source and, and helping kind of prolong the impervious, the stability of the impervious surfaces also?
So the, the main advantage is that it's getting the water farther away. So if, if we didn't have the, the storm drain that's in the parking lot, we would still be recommending to, uh, some way collect it and get it somewhere else in some manner. Um, so that's, that's the main point. And you usually want to get rid of it downhill from where the building is. So, yeah, that's the, and was there a second part of that?
Yeah, the second part of my question is just curiosity about process with the city. Since the city manages stormwater drainage, I'm just curious, like, from a process perspective, what kind of communication with the city or permits are required for draining extra?
Right. So through the design and construction document phase, we'll be coordinating with city staff. The, that, that storm sewer is not in a right-of-way? And it might be in an easement? Maybe it is. Is it, is that a right-of-way? Is that street a right-of-way? I don't know. We'll find out.
Actually, some interesting history about that street. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be interested in what you figure out. Yeah.
Uh, but, yeah. So in any case, we'll, we'll be coordinating because, yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we will.
I think there would be some general acceptance with that approach. Um, and if you really think about it, it's taking water that would potentially wind up on sidewalks and freezing and things. And kind of, it, it really is working in the public safety interest to collect that water. And so I, I, I don't think that would be a big hurdle, but certainly coordination.
Yeah, I think that downspout and the water spout on the west side, I'm sure in, in the winter, that just has to be horrible coming out that door. I mean, there's gotta be ice all over the place. And so that one would really be important to get taken care of.
Does seem like this would close our little parking lot there just to the south of the building for a short time.
So, right, during construction, there would be some disruption of that parking lot for sure. Because, um, yeah, they'll be needing to cut through that and excavate and run pipe and backfill and repave. So, yeah, there will be some time that that's disrupted.
Luckily, those meters are gone from that other parking lot, so. Good timing.
I do want to point out to commissioners that the funding source for this project is outlined in the county's capital improvement plan. Uh, it was part of a larger project just on courthouse renovation work. Now with these estimates and the estimates, uh, revised estimates on the, you know, the, the entire exterior of the building, we're, oh, that, that estimate is not sufficient. So we will, staff will work, you know, on, uh, how we can allocate dollars that were allocated in the twenty-three CIP to try to make sure we have the funds available to do this project. Um, but that was why part of what we wanted to have done with this was to really provide us with better estimates with what it would take to get this work accomplished, um, pretty quickly. Cause we know how tough the construction market is right now.
This Commissioner Reed made me think of one more question, Sarah. I guess I'm just curious, if we were to move forward as, with the recommendations as proposed, I know you gave us a timeline of about sixteen months. Would, do you expect that you would start on that quite quickly? Or is there, I mean, how much does seasonality make a difference for some of the work that you're planning?
So, I think season-wise, we would probably, the only thing I think we would avoid is starting the excavation work in March, April. I think anything outside of that, you know, mid-May and on is, first of June would be probably ideal. But, um, I mean, if we started now and in September and that's two, five, seven, eight months before construction starts. So, I mean, that's like next summer.
Well, thank you all for the thorough information. I want to ask if there are any further questions from other commissioners? Okay. Well, with that, we will, um, adjourn until our business meeting begins at five thirty. Thank you all for being here.